All right, my name is Paul Tagliaberry and I am the Chair of the Northboro Zoning Board of Appeals. It is November 22nd, 2022, and past the hour of 7:00 PM. This open meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of June 16th, 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the Zoning Board of Appeals are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows the Zoning Board of Appeals to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the Chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to Northboro Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comments. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Brad Blanchett?
Here, aye.
Mark Rutan? Mark? I can't, I can't, I didn't get, I couldn't hear your audio. Fran Backstring?
Here.
Suzie Sizlika?
Here.
Jeff Leland?
Here.
Jeff Grabowski?
Here.
Mark Rutan? Think you still have any issues with the, uh? Can't hear you.
So Mark, try changing your sound input in the bottom-left corner where that microphone is. There's a little up arrow next to it, and you should see maybe some different selections for different outputs, so microphones there.
All right, I'll come back. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lori Connors?
Yeah.
Robert Federico?
Here.
And Fred Litchfield?
Here.
Okay. Mark, we can see you. Just let us know when you can get your audio fixed. I still can't hear you now.
Hey Mark, I'm gonna connect with you via email, so be on the lookout for that.
All right, so I mean, I think the first thing I just wanted to do is just quickly introduce Jeff Grabowski to the ZBAs and his alternate. Thank you for volunteering your time to this board. I know you recently moved to Northboro, and I think it's great that you decided to join the board, so thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Mark.
We can, we can wait before we move further until Mark gets reconnected. So I think-
Do the minutes?
We could do the minutes. I guess, um, so Lori, if you just want to confirm, as of right now, we don't have a, uh, any December cases for, no one's filed an application for anything for what would be our December meeting, so I think we were thinking about potentially just canceling that. And so our next meeting was, is gonna be January 3rd of 2023, and that was a discussion with, a joint meeting with the Planning Board. And then our regularly scheduled January 24th would be if there's someone that's filed an application this month, right? Is that correct?
That's correct. We haven't received any filings as of this point.
Okay, so assuming nothing gets continued tonight, then I guess the plan would be to not have our December meeting, which would be, I think theoretically, the 27th of December, so. I guess we could probably just do the minutes. Consideration of the minutes from our last meeting of October 25th, 2022. I guess while we're waiting for Mark, Jeff could be the fifth voter for this. Is there a motion for the minutes from October 25th? I assume everyone has received them and reviewed them, has provided all additional comments, if there are any?
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I move that we accept the minutes from the October 25th, 2022 meeting as submitted.
Second.
All right, so Fran made a motion and Jeff seconded. We'll do a roll-call vote. Fran?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Suzie?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. All right.
Paul, I have a quick question.
Sure.
So that, um, the meeting for January 3rd is the joint meeting with the Planning Board, and then our meeting is gonna be January, I missed that date.
Uh, 24th? Yeah.
Okay, that's what I had down. I wanted to make sure.
So the, so the, yeah, so the January 3rd meeting is just a joint meeting with the Planning Board to discuss potential zoning amendments that the Planning Board is currently refining and discussing. I think Lori and staff are gonna provide us with sort of a overview of the amendments that they're talking about. Hopefully, at least a week or so in advance of the meeting, so that we can have time to review before we go into that meeting. Is that meeting gonna be hybrid, Lori, you know, or have they thought about doing that in person? Is it a public meeting?
I believe, as we don't have the capability of doing a hybrid meeting, so it either has to be 100% in-person or 100% via Zoom. So I, I believe that the plan is to still do it by Zoom.
Okay.
And December, do we have to vote on canceling that, or is that when, or is that a definite, or? I just wanna make sure my calendar's all good.
I think we'll know by the end of tonight.
Okay.
And just to Suzie's point, I just noticed on the agenda, the joint meeting is that starts at 6 o'clock, not 7 o'clock.
Okay.
Oh.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Fran.
All right.
Jim, have you been able to contact Mark?
I sent him an email and I do see him in the meeting, but his camera and microphone are off, which I assume he's still having some trouble.
I think we could probably give him maybe another minute or so.
The alternative, Mr. Chair, would be if we took the applications out of order and elevated one of the Jeffs to a voting position.
Okay. Yeah, I guess. I guess we can give Mark one more minute, say, and then if he doesn't get back in, then we can just kinda do as Fran suggested.
You could introduce our new alternate to everybody.
Oh, yeah. Jeff, welcome to the, uh, to the Northboro Zoning Board of Appeals. So how long have you lived in Northboro? You recently moved, is that correct?
Yeah, a year ago. Yeah, so just past the year mark.
Nice. From another town in Massachusetts, or?
From East Boston. I grew up in Sutton, so I grew up in the area, and then I was out in Colorado for a while, and then back to Boston for law school, and then to East Boston, and then back here to my roots.
Nice. That's great.
But you don't sound like you're from Boston. It must have been the years in Colorado.
Yeah, I tried, tried hard to not sound like I was from-
All right, I don't see Mark on there. Jim, you haven't heard from Mark at all?
No, I'd sent an email to whatever's listed on the Zoom invites, but I haven't heard back yet.
All right. Let's, um, I don't wanna waste what else is time. All right, so I think for this, uh, I think we'll skip to the, to the second item of the agenda for 60 North Gate, and for this one, Jeff Leland, you'll be a voting member on this one. So we're gonna hear the consideration of the application for a variance in the residential C zoning district submitted by Craig Nigerian for relief of the rear and side setback requirements for the pool and deck structure for the property located at 60 North Gate, Assessors Map 94, Parcel 22. And we, Mr. Nigerian is the petition in this case. Jim, do you wanna make him a, here we go.
Hi, Mr. Nigerian? Hi, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you. If you wanna just, I guess, start just giving like an overview as to your project, why you're here, and what you're looking for.
Sure, thanks, Paul. Um, not to, not to bore you with history, but I do think it's important. You know, back in 2011, we had applied to put in a swing set in our backyard. I think I, at that time, I had worked with, with Fred closely on that to get approval. We had to go through a hearing to do so, and really, the plan was to sort of level part of the backyard, but also be mindful of the rear setback with the easement. So we got approval, we put that in in 2011. At that time, I know one of the questions to me in the last couple of weeks was, you know, there's a shed on your property. The shed was there when we bought the house in 2007. So fast forward to to now, we wanted to put in a pool. We thought the best place to put it was on that same flat area that we had the swing set that had been approved prior, so that's where we wanted to put it, because it was the most level part of the land. There were some changes in in the, you know, to the left and the right of where that is, there's a, you know, a four-foot drop, so we wanted to keep it level, obviously, to minimize any excavation. You know, we put in a permit for that and it was approved. At that time, we did put in a fence to the side yard for consideration with our neighbor, because we just got a new puppy during COVID, and we wanted to make sure we were being mindful of their property. Part of this, I, you know, I had, we had done a construction project as well in 2018, which was to add a mudroom to our house, so at that time, we did a plot plan which had, it had been done in 2018. We, we, you know, three years after the project was done, we were asked to do a plot plan because it hadn't been signed off on, so I had done that in 2019. So when we put the fence in, we wanted, I must have measured it 100 times, but we, we used that as our basis for the fence on the side yard. My mistake was that, you know, he had one point of measurement, not two points, so when we put the fence in, it skewed a couple of feet on the backside onto our neighbor's property. So it was a sort of a domino effect, you know, because we were trying to measure the pool to make sure that we were 15 feet from that setback. I had, had measured the fence and had gone in two feet to make sure that if we needed to do maintenance on that fence, that we would be able to do so, but obviously, I made an error, and, you know, now I'm trying to fix it. You know, we put the pool in and it was like one thing after another, so the pool went in on that same area, but it was too close to that property line. You know, once the pool was done in May, I had reached out to ask, you know, we had to have somebody come out and sign off on that part of the permit. That was in late May. I didn't really get a response, and, you know, but then we had, we had reached out to do a permit for the deck. Our contractor, Lou Bignami, had reached out to tell, you know, the building department, we were gonna put in hilical piers. We were doing hilical piers because we wanted to minimize any excavation or disturbance of the soil. You know, we did not want to do any excavation or anything that was gonna cause any problems back there, and that was because, you know, because of the easement. We got a permit for the deck. So, you know, we put in the pool and the deck based off of the permits. You know, during the pool process, one of the things to be in compliance that I was told was to have fencing to make sure that it was a safe environment, to have fencing around the entire yard. Obviously, that benefits us with the dog too, because we're on a busy street and we wanted to make sure the dog was safe. We were asked to put a gate in because it's an above-ground pool, so we did that as well. And so, you know, once we did the final plot plan for it, obviously, you know, the setback on the right was off by a couple of feet with the fence. I have spoken to our neighbor and, um, you know, they, I mean, we're planning on moving that anyway to be in compliance and make sure that it's not on their property, and she was wonderful about it. The issue now has become the backside with the easement, and you know, obviously, we've, you know, invested a lot here, and I just wanna make it right. You know, my, my goal today isn't to, you know, it's just to be straight and tell you the facts, and, you know, I went to Bob and and just said, you know, I wanna be above board, I wanna fix it and make it right, and so that's why I'm here before you today.
So I guess, um, we can start with staff. You guys have any comments or questions for the applicant at this time?
I submitted a comment letter for your consideration. I'm less concerned about the side setback violation than I am concerned about the drainage easement. So unfortunately, the swimming pool, the deck, a portion of the shed, as well as portion of the fence are all within the 30-foot drainage easement. And they're essentially preventing access by the DPW to maintain the drainage swell, which is behind their property, as well as the culvert and the head wall, which goes under Bayflower Road. So my suggestion is if you do decide to grant the variance to allow the pool, deck, and the pool to be within the side setback, sorry about that, that you have a couple of conditions of approval. One is that the fence is relocated so that it is totally outside of the drainage easement. And the second one is if the DPW has to go into the drainage easement to maintain the drainage swell and the culvert, that they be given a 30-day notice if it's, you know, scheduled maintenance to remove the deck and the shed, and then if it's an emergency maintenance, then of course, they could go in and you know, certainly demolish those structures that are within the easement without incurring any sort of penalty or liability, because of course, the whole point of the drainage easement, which is reflected on the deed, is that, that there should be no obstructions whatsoever to that area of the property because the DPW has to go in there to do periodic maintenance.
Okay, so I guess let's start there with the, in regards to the easement. I guess to Lori's point, like, the purpose of the easement is to allow town to access, you know, the culvert or whatever drainage stuff that they need to access. You know, I guess my first question is, why, why did you, like, what was the purpose of putting the fence through the drainage easement, I guess?
To be, to be in compliance with pool regulations, Paul. We were told to put a fence in the yard because you're putting in a pool.
Okay.
You know, and, and the thing with, like, no, I'm sorry to interrupt, I just, uh, like I said, the shed, the shed was there when we bought the house. I didn't build the shed. There's been this ongoing thing that I put the shed up. I did not build the shed. The shed has been there since before I, I was here, just to be full disclosure, you know, and I, I'll say this, like, I, I would not have done anything if I didn't get a permit to do so. You know, I mean, you can call me naive, or, I mean, I, I've talked to 50 people, nobody knows what's in their deed. So, I mean, you can call me ignorant, or stupid, or naive, but I'm not dishonest. You know, I'm trying to do the right thing here, so I just want everyone to hear that from me, you know?
Yeah, no, I, I understand. I guess, you know, to Lori's point of, you know, if there's an issue with the culvert, or there is an issue that the DPW needs to access, right? The easement is how they do that, right?
Sure.
So I guess, like, to, to the comment regarding, you know, if the DPW does need to access it, and they do notify you of 30 days, like, is that something that you would be amenable to?
Yeah, I, my only question is, I don't know what kind of access they need, Paul. Like, I mean, I'm happy to take the fence and adjust it, or, like, how much do they need full backing of it? Access. We haven't seen anybody come here. We've been living here since 2007, and it's been 15 years, and nobody's, I, I didn't know what kind, what is it, like, the entire back, or can we kitty-corner something? Like, I do have a gate on the Mayflower side. I know that was a question, Lori, from the fire department, but there is a gate there. I'm happy to put another gate in, or a bigger gate, or move it in a certain way. I, I understand that, like, I do get that. I just, the deck and the pool itself, I don't know how or why they would have to demolish that to get access, I guess, is something I just don't know enough about, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I think it's more of the fence, but it is, well, I should say, the, the pool and the deck are part, are in the easement, but yeah, I think it's more of accessing the culvert, so it would just mean, and I think that that's probably standard just in terms of easements around town, right?
Sure.
All right, Bob, I think you had your hand up.
Yeah. Yeah, am I on mute?
No, I'm, no, I can hear.
Just to, on this, on the issue with the fence, with an above-ground pool, a fence around the yard is not required by, by, by the code of the law. The, uh, by virtue of the fact that it is an above-ground pool and the sides are of a certain height, that kind of takes the place of having a fence. When you add a deck to a pool, the deck also has to comply with, you know, the, the requirements for a pool barrier, meaning it needs a full handrail around it, and the stairs need a gate with a locking latch mechanism at a certain height. You know, it's, is it recommended to put a fence up for an above-ground pool? Yes, it is. Is it required by building code? No.
Okay.
We, we do have a checklist that goes out with, hopefully, every pool that goes up, and it talks about some of the fences and other barriers that are required during the pool installation process. Those are the things we look at. So it's, it's, you know, the fence isn't, is not a requirement for the pool.
Some of that, Bob, to be honest, we also wanted to make sure our dog was safe and not running into a road, so we, you know what I mean, and that's, that's beside the point here, but just so you folks know.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's fine. I mean, like I said, you know, once, once a fence acts as a guide as a security structure around a pool, it becomes a barrier for the pool and not just a fence. And just to make it clear, if you wanna put up a fence to keep the dogs in the yard, that's fine. The added security for the kids in the pool is also a great idea.
That's what we're thinking. It was a double, you know, a double plus, but in hindsight, now it's-
Yeah, yeah. Just understand that it's not a requirement from the pool. That's all.
Gotcha.
Right.
Okay. Does anyone from the board have any questions? Fran, we could start with you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. All right, so I'm just, I just looked up on the GIS map. It appears that the shed is within the drainage, the 30-foot drainage easement, and then, of course, the fence behind it. So what we're saying is that if the DPW needed to do something in the, in the water, they would have access to the 30-foot drain easement, which we're asking the applicant if he would be willing to move that shed or get it out of their way if they needed to do that, but he'd also have to move the fence out of the easement?
So, so I think, I think the basic issue, or the purpose of the easement, is to give town access to a portion of someone's property, right? And there is a culvert that sort of goes underneath Mayflower, and, you know, I think everyone has seen the email from Scott with the pictures of what the culvert does look like, right? And sort of Scott's rough assessment of what, you know, his thoughts on the culvert. So I think that the issue, or part of my, my question at least, is if the DPW needs to access that back area to replace, to repair, to remove debris, whatever the case is, right? They can do so by accessing the easement, and if there's a fence there, they can't go back there. They can't bring their trucks back there, and I think I, I think what I'm just trying to understand is that the applicant knows that that's an issue, right, and that if given, say, 30 days, that they would be responsible for removing the fence and then allowing the DPW to get back there.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I, I think that is how I understood it. I just, maybe I needed to hear it a second time. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Jeff?
I do want to clarify that the DPW Director provided the draft condition, and he wanted to be clear that in an emergency situation, there will be no notice given. He'll just go in there and they'll just remove the fence. They'll just demolish whatever's in the way. And it is possible that there may be an emergency because the head wall is in poor condition by his assessment. So I just wanted to clarify that you may get noticed, but you may not get noticed if there's an emergency.
Okay. Jeff?
So we have a plot plan, and then we have a sketch, and I'm not quite sure is the 30 feet on the applicant's land, or is it 30 feet from the, the edge of the stream? What is the, where's the 30 foot, if I could ask, please?
So the sketch is not correct.
Okay.
So the- So the, so there is actually a drainage swell, which looks like a river.
Yep, I went and looked at it today, so I can visualize it.
And that is off of this gentleman's property. So the 30-foot drainage easement is on this gentleman's property.
And so from taking that into consideration, 30 feet, which comes to where the shed is, where does that come in relationship to the pool and the stones that are marked on the sketch? Because I saw them on site. Are they within that 30-foot area?
Yes, so if you look at the ASBIL plan dated September 20th, 2022, it identifies the location of the shed, the deck, and the pool, and the fence relative to the drainage easement.
Must not have printed that. Okay, thank you.
I can see if I can pull that up if, if you need to. It'll take me a minute, though.
Okay.
All right, Lori, you said it's September 20th.
Yeah, it looks like this, Brad, or Jeff.
Got it, okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm just wanna make sure I'm looking at the right drawing as well. So, okay.
Suzie? See your hand raised?
I, um, I, I had a question when we were talking about the fence, and Bob was talking about the pool, the pool rules and laws and what's needed. So the fence could be moved to the edge of that 30-foot easement and go, just and pretend that the pool and the deck were in the right area. I'm just trying to get the, the rules down pat, so the fence could go to the pool deck and the pool side, and that would be okay, Bob? Like, it doesn't need to be enclosed by this fence. Is that what you were saying?
Yeah, you're on mute.
In terms of having the pool in relation to the fence, the pool's an above-ground pool and does not need a fence at all. Okay, so the, for an above-ground full pool, a fence is not- the fence was put up from, from, from the property owner by his own admission for, to help protect the dogs as well.
Okay.
That being said, a fence that is not related to a pool. Uh, does, does not require a permit in Northborough unless it's over seven feet tall. Um, so, you know, in in the basic guideline is that the fence has to be on. Uh, the property owner's own property, okay? We don't check the fences. We don't issue permits for fences unless they're over a certain height. Or we, and we don't bring an issue to a fence uh, unless it causes a visibility uh, issue for traffic and pedestrians. So, you know, that that we, we don't monitor the position of fences um, or require permits for the most part. Um, in this particular case, it was picked up with um, a certified plot plan, which was actually for the addition of the house. Um, a couple of years ago. Um, when the surveyors go out, uh, the surveyors typically look at everything in the yard, uh, including fences, including pools. Uh, including sheds and other structures that were there before the current owner bought the property. They just, they just literally go out there and witness what's on the land within the uh, the lot properties.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So if you'd like, I can orient you to this uh, ASBIL plan. Uh, can you see this? Okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so the uh, the drainage channel is to the north of this uh, of this plan here. Um, and there is a bridge uh, or a culvert underneath Mayflower Road. Uh, if you can see my arrow, the head wall is approximately in this location. Uh, so the thirty-foot easement is on the applicant's property. And within that easement, we have a portion of the shed. We have uh, this uh, this aluminum fence. Uh, we have the pool deck and we have a small portion of this above-ground pool. Um, there is also a portion of the fence. This is a six-foot socketed fence, uh, which um. Mister Najarian had referred to, uh, was accidentally constructed on his neighbor's property. Uh, so that would have to be slid over. Um, so that, that is the issue.
Okay, uh, and Lori, to confirm, right, you know, the variance is really about the setbacks, right?
Yeah.
It's the, it's the relief, uh, versus, you know, since this is a corner lot and there's, you know, two fronts and two sides. Um, I guess in this, the way the 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 map is showing, sort of the back in this r- case, he's looking for, call it, say, a foot. Or six inches of relief, right? And then on the right side, it's actually looking for eight feet of relief?
Yeah, so this is, this is really tiny, so um. The variance uh, request here, um, of course, the, the side setback is fifteen feet and he has fourteen point nine. Uh, feet, so that's a miniscule uh, variance request. It's more drastic in this location. Um, so the corner of the pool deck is only six point seven feet from the uh, side lot line, and it should be fifteen feet. And then the pool is ten feet, uh, and once again, it should be fifteen feet. So this is the bigger ask.
Okay, and then I guess, I know the the plot land doesn't show it, but I guess uh, Mr. Najarian, I guess, from your. As the pool is built, I I assume there is fifteen feet from the side of the pool to the, where the fence is?
Well, when I did it, Paul, I I had, when I, we put the fence in, I thought we were on the proper line, so I had actually went out fifteen feet. And then I walked in two feet so that we would be putting the fence thirteen feet from the pool, if if that makes sense, it would be. Like, we, I tried to imagine, so I was fifteen feet from my property line, but we put the fence in, two feet in. But I was wrong, so, you know, you know what I mean? I'm, that wa- that was the plan, but obviously, uh, it was a mistake.
Okay. Um.
We had a, we had like a row of trees up a- at one time that the the the, the former owner had owned. So we had like stumps in the ground and things like that that they had put in that that were cut down. So we were, you know, we thought we were in the right spot, but I was wrong.
Okay, um, does anyone else from the board have any other questions? Um.
Mr. Chair, I saw uh, Fran's hand up.
Brad. Uh, yeah.
Yeah, I I took it back. Yeah, I, thanks, Brad. Um, I did take it back down because. Our, I mean, if the homeowner is willing to abide by any conditions related to the OMG moment where he'd have to move stuff out of the way of an emergency. Our, the only thing in front of us is whether we're going to grant the variance for the setbacks. Is that correct? Right?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Um, alright, so does anyone else from the board? Or staff have any other questions or comments? And if you do, just. You can shout it out. Alright, I don't see any. Uh, Mark, are you back?
I don't know. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, okay. Yep, so Mark, we just started uh, the the Northgate case, but.
You have, you have an alternate, right?
Yep, yes, we do. Jeff, Jeff Williams, too.
Yeah, that's great.
Uh, if you have any questions or comments, just, okay. Alright, uh, this is a public hearing, um, so for those who are listening in, um, if you could please raise your hand. Or Jim, if you're on the phone, is it what, star six?
Um, I believe it's star nine to raise your hand and then star six would be on mute, and I do see a hand raised.
Okay, uh, Karen Ryberg. Okay, we have three. So uh, let's start with Karen.
She's on mute, okay.
Okay, hi Karen, can you hear us?
Yep.
Great, if you could just please state your full name and your address and then.
Karen Ryberg, seven Chesterfield Road. Just a couple houses from, up from Craig.
Okay.
I've just been listening and, I mean, I hate the thoughts of. Somebody saying. Well, you know, if there's an emergency, we'll just go on and tear it down. I mean, I, I'm sorry. I don't think that's very um, neighborly. Especially with all the money and time invested. And I like the family, too.
Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome, Craig. But no, I'm sorry. I just don't. I know you're gonna move the fence because it's two feet. Past your line, but I also know that. I love your pool. No, I don't, I, sorry, Lori, but I just don't like the attitude of saying, well, you know, if we need an emergency, we'll just go plowing in and knock everything down. Um, I don't think that's very neighborly and I just don't like that type of speaking and attitude. I've lived here, I'm seventy-two and I've lived here since I was four years old. And nobody's ever had to do an emergency at that culvert. Nobody.
You know, if I can just respond, it's nothing personal. The purpose of that easement, that easement's been in place since the subdivision was built in the nineteen fifties.
I know.
The purpose of the easement is because at one time or another, that culvert will have to be replaced. And uh, if the culvert fails, then the, the street could potentially collapse. So they need, the DPW will need access to the easement in order to fix the culvert, in order to replace the culvert. Um, it's, so it's not, that's being malicious, uh, and that's why it's recorded in the deed so that the people who own the land going forward will know that they can't put structures in that area. So it's certainly nothing personal for Mr. Najarian. Um, but I'm sure the neighborhood would be quite upset if the road were to collapse. Uh, because of the, you know, the fact that the culvert is no longer functioning.
That's a lot of ifs and what-ifs and, you know. The sky could fall tomorrow, what if? I know, in a.
Yeah, thank you very much, Karen. Uh, do you have any other questions or comments?
Nope.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, so I also see a hand for Robert and Judy Coughlin.
Hi, thanks for inviting us. Can you hear us okay?
Yes, if you could just please state your name and then your address.
Uh, Judy Coughlin, fifty-six Northgate Road. We are adjacent to Craig and Katie. Uh, we just want to go on record, um, we did speak with Craig in person that the fence will be moved back to the property line. Um, we're looking ahead to either one of us selling our properties and we just want to make sure the line is clear. Um, and from the discussion tonight and Craig's comments, uh, that still is in the works, that that portion will be corrected.
Correct, thanks, Judy.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Yep.
Um, I also see uh, Lorraine's hand up as well.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hello, Lorraine, yes. If you could just please state your name and your address, thank you.
Sure, it's Lorraine Kane and I live at ten Mayflower Road. So I just had a couple of questions. I mean, I understand the fencing being close to the culvert there. Fortunately, I've been here for, for six years now and I've never seen the water in the culvert come very high, so that's a good thing. Um, I just had a question and I understand you'd have to take the fence down. Um, but I I did, as the previous caller said, like, coming in and just like destroying the deck, destroying the pool. If it was a last-minute thing, like I said, fortunately, the water's never been that high. I walk by there all the time. But is there able to access on two Mayflower if you had to really get in? Is it only, and I understand the coding, but one side, but if it was an emergency, can you not access on two Mayflower on the other side of the culvert? I guess, I might not understand this. Is this an engineering thing for Fred? I'm not sure. I just really had that kind of question.
I guess I would say I think this is more of a DPW question more than anything else. And so, you know, just to kind of, um, you know, we reached out to the DPW director, uh, Mr. Sharpe, right here, ahead of time or ahead of this meeting. He provided sort of his analysis and his um, request, um, along with sort of an assessment of the culvert. Um, so that's probably more of a question, I think, for him.
I just thought it might be an option, that's all, because I'm looking, I walk by there all the time and I, I understand if the fence is too close, that's true. Another neighbor had to lose, you know, footage on his. If it was an oversight, I get that. But I think the way it came across is me, and I'm a town employee, but when it came across is that we, you know, if it was an emergency, we would just go in and take down the pool, take down the deck. And at the, the uh, owner's expense, which was, you know, to me, and I'm looking, saying, okay, but there is another side to the culvert. So is that an option? I can see take down the fence, that can easily put back up, but it was very nicely done. The pool is nice. It was beautiful for the people looking at it from on, from two Mayflower. Um, it just seemed that that comment to me seemed just really harsh. At, by not following the zoning bylaws and getting the c- correct requirements. I'm not a pro at all this. I'm just a resident that lives down the street, but I always thought there was an option on the other side of the road. Unfortunately, that water level never comes up. So that's a good thing. That's it. That's my comment.
Okay.
Hi, Fred.
Thanks, Lorraine.
Um, Paul, I can just chime in a little bit. If uh, if people want to look at the GIS. You can see the thirty-foot wide drainage easement on the Najarian side of the brook or the, the stream, the swale, if you will. And then the culvert and the actual water line is within a twenty-foot easement on two Mayflower Circle. The area at the rear of the property in question here is where the DPW would set up to work on that culvert. They need room to access it. The easement doesn't extend much beyond the water on the other side of the, of the other side of the, the swale, if you will. And so, the DPW, as Craig pointed out, has not been in there. We don't go in typically to do routine maintenance. We evaluate the structures as necessary. We replace them when they need to be done, um, and they're budgeted and there's plenty of time in advance of something like that. An emergency is just that, an emergency, and we always assume they're going to happen in the middle of the night during a very large rain or snowstorm. And we do whatever we have to do to secure property downstream and the roadway. And so if that remove, if that means removing some structures and things that are in the way in order to do that, that's what they'll do. It's not intended to be harsh or personal. As Lori pointed out, it's not personal. It's just a matter of taking care of the emergency at hand. Anything else is planned, there's plenty of notice, and there are options to work around. I'm sure the DPW's first choice would not be to go in there and rip out his pool, um, if it wasn't absolutely necessary. Um, the whole idea behind the easement is to give us the right to go in and access that property. And easement is just that, the right to access over someone else's property that you don't own and you have secured the rights to do so. And that's why it's entered into the subdivision when it was approved and the deeds of all the properties along there, along Northgate Road that have that same easement. So, um, realistically, there's ways to work around it. In an emergency, some of those ways go out the window and we do whatever we can to secure the emergency and keep it from damaging property and lives downstream.
Okay, thank you, Fred. Appreciate that.
Okay.
Um, let's see.
Paul, can I ask you just a quick question?
Um.
Sorry.
Sorry, I just want, I just want to see if there's any other uh, public.
Okay, sorry.
Comments. Uh, alright, I don't see any. Yep, sorry, yep, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, like, I mean, are there options here? Like, if I move it now. I I just didn't know how much access do they need, you know what I mean? Like, if, I I don't want to move it again and then be not, that doesn't work either, you know, you see what I'm saying? So I've kind of like left everything as is until this meeting tonight so that I, I get full information before I start doing anything, you know what I'm saying?
Sure, I mean, I would say that as it relates to the, what's occurring on the right side of the, your property line. Where the fence was built onto the other person's property, I would say that probably has to move.
Of course.
I think this is, I think just in general, like easements, and Fred, correct me if I'm wrong, this goes for any easement in town for any property, right? If you build something on an easement, whether you have a pool, a shed, a fence, a playground, right? If there's an emergency and someone needs to access that easement, regardless of what's there and regardless of where you live, right? That's why we have easements in town, right? That's, so like, I think that, I think the DPW is just trying to make sure that there's awareness, that there is an easement and that there is a possibility that in an emergency, they will need to access that through the easement.
Okay.
And that if there is not an emergency and it's something that's, you know, routine or whatever the case is, that they provide you some amount of time or notice to be able to access that.
Okay.
Right? I don't think there's anything different than, like, I don't, like, there's nothing different in just in terms of how easements exist throughout town, right? Fred, quickly from on, I mean, you can, if you look at the GIS map, there's a thirty-foot drainage easement that literally runs from. Almost where Ruth Road is all the way down to uh, Jethro Peters Lane, right? Uh, along the back of all those houses, so they can access that entire easement if needed. The issue here is that there's fences there, right? So just to make sure that you're aware of that.
Okay, got it.
Um, Suzy, I think you had your hand up, yep?
Um, this is kind of a question, I think, for Fred. Um, in the same neighborhood, was that the, was that a similar thing that failed on Davis Ave? When it was closed for so long last year? And then it was like affecting the drainage over on Longfellow and kind of down the line? When they had to tear up the road and replace the culvert pipe?
I believe what happened on Davis Ave was a planned event. Uh, we went out to bid, we got a contractor, we lined them up, so it was a scheduled thing. It was not an emergency.
Okay, but that was kind of like, what could happen to Mayflower? In an emergency?
Under a, no, uh, well, that would all happen very quickly in an emergency.
Yeah.
What we, what we normally do in an emergency is, um, like we did on Otis Street, uh, we closed the road. There was a very inconvenient closing of Otis Street at the culvert by the uh, coffee shop. Um, and it was closed that way for a year while we had an analysis done, we got a contractor in, and we got the money, and then we. and we got the money and then we replaced the culvert. It was closed for a long time so that it wouldn't fail and we wouldn't have to do something like that in an emergency. Um, most culverts are evaluated, all culverts are evaluated and most are taken care of before they fail. There are other reasons to get into that easement. As you go downstream behind all the houses behind North Gate, um, if a tree were to get in there and a, and they couldn't get in there by hand, they might have to go in with a backhoe or something to reach out and pull a log out to make sure the flow was still going where it needed to go. There are lots of different scenarios, but again, an emergency failure of the culvert and the headwalls is the worst case. We would close the road and we would try to assess the situation and do the best we could. Like I said, the, the DPW director is absolutely correct. In an emergency, all bets are off and we do what we have to do to fix it. It's never the first choice to go in and rip down somebody's pool and stuff. But we have that right because the easement's in place. If the easement wasn't in place, it would be a whole different discussion. Um, the, the easement is the right of the grant, the grantee to pass and repass over the easement at any time. And it's the grantor or the property that granted the easement, their obligation to maintain that right to pass and repass of others. And that's what's been interfered with and what he was trying to say in his memo was that, look, we acknowledge that it's there. They could say you have to take it out. We, we don't allow people to build in there if we knowingly that, that somebody wants to do something and it's an in-easement, we tell them they can't build in the easement. And had we, had we all been aware of it at the time, we would have recommended that everything be pulled outside that easement. Um, it's not the case. What he's trying to do is to offer some middle ground by saying, look, it's there, in an emergency, we'll have to deal with it. But any other, in any other routine thing, we'd like to have the ability to at least have the fence out of there so we can get in if we needed to. Seems reasonable. The most reasonable thing we could do at this point is to follow his advice.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Fred. Appreciate that. Um, yeah, Brad.
Yeah, so actually Fred, another question for you, uh, on Lincoln Street, Culvert this summer, right by Lincoln Street School. How to deal with that? Is that something, is that what just regular maintenance? Or that wasn't an emergency, was it? Was that planned and it took a couple of months and it was a discussion, but?
It was, it was not an emergency because it didn't fail. But the road was, uh, failing and so it was closed for traffic safety because it wasn't safe. We tried to, um, fix that. It, it was serious in that it, the road needed to be closed and we, we didn't want traffic going over there and doing, doing any more damage. Our, our goal was to, uh, close that road, get that culvert replaced over the summer before school started and we just barely made that. But it was something we had our eye on. As I said, we evaluate all the culverts in town. We rate them. We try to keep an eye on them. Um, that one was a little bit quicker in need of repair than we would normally like to do. We normally like to have it, you know, a few years before we think it might fail, but you never know when they're going to fail. Um, that one was planned, but it was a rather quick schedule.
Okay. I mean, the only reason why I'm bringing that up too i- is, is just because I just want people to know on the, on this, in this meeting. Like, these are the scenarios that it's not just like the DPW is going to go in and just, you know, knock everything over and things like that. It, they'll come in when it needs to be done. And, uh, you know, just speaking on a national level, like a lot of our infrastructure is getting old, it's failing. And so that's, that, that is a slight possibility that something may have to be done. Um, just whether it's a culvert, whether it's a major highway, whatever, but I just want, just kind of just set expectations a little bit, I guess.
Okay, okay. Thanks, Fred. Um, does anyone else from the board have any other questions or comments? Uh, do one last look at the public. I don't see any hands. Um, I guess, uh, Mr. Njerian, do you have any other further comments?
No.
To this case?
So it's helpful to hear the, the perspectives from everybody. I certainly understand that. You know, the DPW has to do their job and they, they need to be able to not have anything in their way. I guess I just want to work with people and find a solution here. So, you know, if that's, I don't know of putting a gate in the back so that, you know, i- there's options. But I guess that was my whole thing too, is I just didn't, the, the way it was pitched early was that they're going to come in with a backhoe and just take this thing apart and it, it it just helps to hear sort of like some of the other scenarios like Brad said. Stuff comes up. I, I understand that and I certainly don't want anything to fail with the street or put any other houses in danger. I just trying to solve, you know, like, I, I guess from what, um, Fred said, i- it's there. But if they have to kind of come in and do what they have to do, or if I get noticed to move it, then I'll certainly do that. You know, I just, I'm not really sure what to say. I'm just, I just want to make it right.
Yep. That's, that's good. I mean, I guess I would just, uh, final thing for me is, is that, uh, you know, the easement's not what you're asking for. I mean, the easement exists throughout town and every, most, most property owners have an easement, right? What you're looking for is a very setback bearings, um, for the pool on the sides. Um, and that's what we're, we're looking at. All right. If, I don't see any other hands or any other questions.
And the only thing I'll say, Jeff, Paul, is that the, you know, the fence, I mean, I know that, like I said, we did the fence. That's also out of respect for our neighbors too, um, specifically Judy and Bob, uh, next door. And, um, so it wasn't just for the safety of our dog, but I was trying to be mindful of, you know, um, prop, the property line with regard to that. So it was done out of, uh, from a good place. It wasn't done maliciously or anything like that. And I guess that's the last thing I'll say. I, I think the, I think it's, it's been a nice addition to the neighborhood, um, like Karen mentioned, so I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Uh, if there's nothing else from anyone, I, I don't really have. I mean, if someone wants to make an, or entertain a motion to close the case.
Yeah. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, uh, close the hearing for, um, Mr. Njerian and sixty North Gate Road.
Second.
Okay, uh, Brad made a motion and Fran seconded. Um, Brad?
Hi.
Fran?
Hi.
Uh, Suzie?
Hi.
Uh, Jeff Leland?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Okay. Thank you very much. Um, we're, we're going to be discussing the case, uh, probably later on after we hear the next case.
So just, what do I, just wait to hear, Paul? Is that?
Yeah, I mean, you don't really need to, you can hang around if you really want to. Um, but we're going to hear another case and then we'll talk about your case and make a decision. So we can either hang out or just call the office tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you so much, everybody.
You got it.
Thank you.
All right.
Chair, can I request five minutes?
A five-minute recess? Um, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Uh, so Mark, you, you figured out your?
I, I, I hope so.
Okay, okay.
Feedback.
Okay, cool. Uh, so we basically just skipped over the, uh, eighty Main Street and went to the sixteen North Gate case.
Okay. Yes, was, is eighty Main Street here?
Uh, I believe yes.
Okay. I apologize for the rest of the board for the, uh, technical difficulties.
That's, all right. Uh, we, we also, I guess while you were gone, uh, we approved the minutes from October. Um, and then assuming that we make decisions on both the cases today, um, there are no December cases, so our plan is to not have a December twenty-sixth, uh, ZB meeting.
Okay.
So. Sorry, December twenty-seventh. Uh, and then our next meeting is January third, um, twenty twenty-three at six PM, which is our joint meeting with the planning board to discuss, um, potential zoning amendments uh, for the annual town meeting.
All right, thanks.
You got it. We all messed up.
And while we're waiting, just Mr. Chair, uh, to the new Jeff, just in case you didn't real, you could have, you can participate if you want. You just can't vote, so don't, don't be too shy on your first day.
Thanks, Fran. Appreciate it.
Lori, I thought of you saying that you used your grandmother's dishes for Thanksgiving. I had my tea in my grandmother's old cup. Remember these? Senka or something? Right there.
All right, I'm back. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So I think we're just waiting on Fred and uh, Jeff. There you go. All right, all right, great. Um, so the, the next item on the agenda is a continuation of the petition, uh, David Cooley for a variance reconstruction of a single-family structure on the property located at eighty Main Street, map sixty-four, pos twenty-three, in the Main Street Residential Zoning District. Um, Mr. Cooley, can you hear us? Hello? I think it shows you on mute right now. Hey. How's it going? All right, so, um, this is just a continuation of the meeting that we had last month. Um, so just wanted to review just some of the open items that I had. Um, so, uh, there was a difference in the bedrooms compared from the assessors to the applicant and then Bob, Bob, you did a walkthrough a couple of weeks ago. Um, and you, you counted seven bedrooms, three to two, I think it was?
Right.
Okay. Um, anything, anything additional to add, um, from, from besides your email or not?
No, it's, it's, I mean, we went to count bedrooms and, um, you know, the, the bedroom count that I came up with was what we discovered. Um, you know, there's, you know, there's an occasional need for a smoke detector or something like that, but that's fairly common and that's more of a maintenance issue than it is a zoning or, or any kind of issue. So.
Sorry, great. Thank you. Um, and then, uh, Fred, um, just your, your comments on the, the water line and the sewer. Um, just the, uh, from the water line, you know, there'd be two separate from the street. Um, and then the sewer, just that there would be like a, a, a drainage cleanout where the two connect. Is there anything additional from that?
Uh, nope, the two separate on the water line is just so that we can have separate, uh, places to turn it off in case one is not uh, functioning so that it doesn't impact the other one. And then the sewer line can be one line with a cleanout, um, at the point where they come together because that's where things would clog up, so.
Okay. Uh, and then the last thing was the, the drywall runoffs, but I believe, Fred, you confirmed last meeting that, um, that could be included within the building plan, uh, once submitted, right?
Yep. When the building permit was, uh, applied for, then we would take care of that.
Great. Um, does anyone else on the board have any other questions, comments, uh, updates from anything from the last meeting?
Yeah.
Uh, Brad? Brad, yes?
Uh, so I think this is more for Bob, but based on the number of bedrooms and the bedrooms for the new dwelling um, to be built, how many parking spots are needed in, uh, in that parking lot and are there enough parking spaces there today?
Um, make sure I'm on mute, okay. Um, I have basically the, the parking spaces that was on the proposed plan is going to comply with the amount of bedrooms currently in, on the property. I did the numbers. A two-bedroom is, uh, two spaces.
Yes.
One bedroom is one and a half spaces. Okay, we didn't have any three bedrooms.
Oh, you did, three, two.
Did we have a three-bedroom?
Yeah.
Okay. So we had a, a three or two or two, right? Is that what we came up with?
Yeah, that's, I'm looking at the email that you had sent, uh, Lori.
The email is true. My mind is bawling. Um, so, so three, two and two is, uh, two, four, six and ten percent, which would be basically seven. Okay, I think he's got nine proposed, eight proposed?
Ten.
Ten?
Ten.
Ten. I got a ten. Okay, so we need uh, two, four, six. And then the other, uh, the proposed building is, how many bedroom?
Two.
Okay.
Good better.
Okay, two, four, six, eight. Eight plus one is nine and he's proposing ten. So in terms of parking allotment, he's good. He's, he's, he's okay.
Okay, by one. Okay.
Yeah. It's, uh, it's all, it's all, uh, private residential, so, uh, there are, there is no need for handicap parking spot.
Hmm. Thanks, Bob.
Okay, um, are there any other questions or comments from the board or staff? All right, um, I will check the public to see if there's any public feedback. Um, I don't see any other hands raised at this time. Uh, and then I guess, uh, Mr. Cooley, do you have any other, uh, final comments, um, or questions for the board?
No, I don't think I have any, uh, you know, final comments or questions or whatnot. You know, I just think, uh, you know, just want to reiterate, you know, obviously from the last meeting a month ago. Um, you know, Jess and I are both local, uh, business owners, both live in town. Um, you know, we're creating a, uh, single-family dwelling that's going to allow, um, you know, a family to live in town. Uh, you know, we're looking to build this, you know, not only for our future, but, you know, for, you know, our, our child's future as well. And, uh, I think there's nothing negative that I can say about this project. Um, I'd be, uh, I'd be very curious to see if someone could say something negative about it. I think it's a great project. I think it's a viable project and, uh, I, I'm more than happy to, uh, answer any other questions.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Fran?
So just, um, just to clarify, one of the, um, reasons for leaving, um, asking for a continuance was so that we could prepare some draft conditions in the event that the variance is, um, voted on. Have those, is the applicant aware of those conditions and understands them and is agreeing to all of them as? as drafted? Or should we talk about what it is that, what the conditions are? I'm just not clear.
I think Lori, do you want to, those conditions were, were sent over to the applicant?
Yes, they were.
Okay. And Dave, all the conditions or so Mr. Cooley, the conditions that you received, were there any issues with any of them?
Yeah, I think it would probably be best for, to go through the line items per condition and we can speak about them. Obviously, every person had time to come up with their own concerns. So either somebody can spearhead it or Lori can, she was the one that sent it to me. But if you want to go through them, item by item, we can go over it and you know, there are some things that I would like to change or propose a difference in them.
Okay. Does everyone, I assume the board has a copy of the draft decision with all the the conditions? Is that correct? Does anyone not have it, I should say? Okay. Is, are there, is there, I mean, is there anyone in particular, Mr. Cooley, you want to discuss?
If you want, I can actually share my screen with you. I had come up with a little draft myself on top of the draft that Lori had provided, if that would just make it easier.
Sure.
Project share screen. All right, so can everyone see this? Yes. Am I muted? Am I muted? Okay, so for the, for A1, what I would propose is that the site plan that I have used with the land surveyor still be used instead of a silver, silver engineer. I'm not exactly sure why that the actual plan that I've already provided can't be used. It's been used with groundwater and conservation, the exact same, you know, land surveyor and the, you know, the, the stuff that I had provided. So I'm just not sure what, what a different, what a silver engineer is going to do differently than a land surveyor. I don't know, I don't, I don't know who, who put the line items in there. So someone that had added that from the ZBA wants you know, reiterate why they had wanted that in there, then I'm more than happy to, you know, continue talking about it. But if not, I can just move on to the next line item if they don't have to comment on it.
How do you want us to, to deal with this, Paul? Do you want us to go item by item? So, you know, he, would you want us to respond to this now or wait till the end?
I, I think we could probably just wait till the end if that works. I think, Mr. Cooley, you could just go through all of your comments and we can sort of just take them on. And then if we have any, you know, additional feedback, we can provide that as well.
Okay. Landscaping, I'm fine with whatever, whatever you guys like to see in a meeting with the town planner and the engineer. Obviously, my background is a, as a landscape design company, so I'm perfectly fine with coming up with something. There's currently no landscaping there at all. So anything that gets added to the project is better than what is currently there. I'm fine with doing a perk test. That's, that's no issue. With the drainage that Fred is, you know, wanting there, perk test would have to get done anyway. So I'm, I'm fine with that as well. The impervious cover, I'm perfectly fine with that as well. For the cut sheet for the exterior lighting and a photometric plan, the lighting was shown on my original plan. I'm not really sure what that is needed for. It seems kind of excessive. The lights are already on the existing three family and, you know, there will be lights on the front of the single family. So that was my comments on that. Roof runoff, that was covered in my groundwater, so I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. My only concern was with connecting the new water lines in, as Fred had mentioned, was I was going to look to see if there was a, a way to, to go around that if I work with Mass DOT. So I don't know if the members from the ZBA realize this, but since I'm on Route 20 and the water main is on the opposite side of Route 20, you have to actually work with Mass DOT to do that hookup, not with the town. So what I'm asking for is if I go to Mass DOT and they push off my project by several months, then the town to reconsider me keeping my initial water hookups the way that they are in my sewer hookups. For the electric, I'm fine with doing what is asked to being done about bringing it under the ground as long as National Grid approves the same. For the parking lot to be expanded, I was a little bit confused as to why somebody would ask that. My concerns on that are is I meet adequate parking and I actually have two additional parking spots. As you can see in my plan, one of them is being used by the dumpster and the other is a full parking space. So I was a little bit confused as to see, you know, why somebody would want that, that, that space A to have something else added there, but that can be talked about after this when we pull up the site plan. For the potholes, that's no issue at all. I can, you know, take care of the cracks in the driveway and go from there. What I don't want to do is, I don't want to have to asphalt overlay. It seems to me like F and G are a little bit confusing. One wants the cracks repaired and one wants the asphalt overlay. So some clarification on that would be good. And as we move down to the last item, I'm not really sure how you guys come up with the calculations for this. So whoever had, had wanted that, I'd be interested to see how the calculations are figured for this. I don't, I don't know anything about it. Like I said before, I have done some, you know, assistance for an Afghani family that they had asked me to and I, and I have done some low income housing in the past, but I, I've never been a part of the specific, you know, item that you're asking me for. So if someone could provide how they figure the calculations for the eighty percent and all that, you know, we could go from there, but I don't, I don't want to be held down to it, obviously without knowing, you know, everything. And I'm not opposed to it by no means. And that should be it.
Fred, I'm going to suggest that you take, you take the first one. Number one, the site plan designed by a civil engineer.
Sure. The surveyor is not qualified to design things. He's, he's qualified to survey things and show them on the plan as they already appear. You need a civil engineer in order to design the sewer system or the water system. And so typically they would work together. You wouldn't have to create a new plan, but the civil engineer might have some comments and his stamp should be on the plan with the civil, the surveyor. It's not a big deal, but it's typical that site plans are submitted by a surveyor rather, by a civil engineer rather than a surveyor. It's really not very negotiable. I don't know how much more design work you have to do, but if there's anything a civil engineer would need to stamp to plan.
Okay.
If we go down to number five, the, the only reason why I asked for the cut sheets is just so that we can see what type of lighting that you're proposing. And you can demonstrate that the lighting is going to be sufficient. So you're gonna, there, there was concern that the current parking lot is not adequately lit. So the, I, I think you're on mute. I don't know if you're talking, David.
Yeah, I'm just talking to Jess quickly, but I'm listening to what you're saying.
Okay, so, so the photometric plan will demonstrate that your proposed lighting scheme is going to be adequate to light the parking lots, but it's not going to be excessive to spill onto your neighbor, particularly the residential property. Less concerned about the commercial property.
Okay, yeah, I just think that, you know, I have those dozen letters or so from the neighbors and, and you know, they've agreed and they've seen the project and I've got approval from almost all my butters. Actually, every single butter that was home, which was a dozen of them, I only took one day to go around or one and a half days, excuse me. Every single butter was, was, was for this project that was home. No one didn't want to sign. If they were home, they signed.
This, this is just asking to verify that your parking lot is adequately lit for safety and security reasons. So it's not to say that, you know, I'm opposed to your project in any way.
Okay. That's fine, yeah. If that's what, if that's what it's going to come down to, then it's, we're in the grand scheme of thing. If that's what you like, that's what you like.
Fred, you want to take letter C?
Sure. The, the way it works is I understand that Dave and I issued the curb cut permits for the town is that when you have a project on Route 20, the state requires the town to submit the application. So we will work with you on how we want you to connect to our water system and then you would give us the applications filled out. We would file them with the state. The state would issue the permit to us as the town and then you would be given the approval to go to work. It's I don't know, the only thing that holds it up is a time to get things filed, depending on what time of year you file it and how long it takes to get the information back and forth. The tricky part is that depending on what the state has for requirements for the trench. Sometimes I use flowable fill. There's a section of Route 20 that has an eight inch concrete layer below the asphalt that requires quite a bit of work and that has to be cut through and, and it's harder to do, but it's not generally something that they hold up for an extended period of time. But because you're tying into the town's water system, we, we would be the ones who actually file that application with them and you would pay the fee and you would send everything to us and then I file it electronically on your behalf.
Okay, that's, that's acceptable. I just figured I'd let you know now that if it does get approved, I'd probably look at drilling as opposed to digging across 20.
As long as the state approves that. They, they are the ones who have control over how you get across. We tell you where to connect and, and where to come out. If it's a direct drilling, that's there's some, there's some hurdles that go with that. So it's not as simple as just saying we're going to use directional drilling. Then there's traffic management that has to get involved. Detours and whatever we have to do, how much of the road has to be kept open is all part of that review. So it's, it's fairly involved, but I know that there was another project on Route 20 up past Times Square where the developer ended up open trenching it because he just couldn't get the directional drilling details worked out. So it's complicated, but it's not impossible.
Yes, sir. Hey, as long as you're willing to work with me, Fred, I'm, I'm excited. So it'll be, it'll be a good thing.
Well, that part of it comes down to what the state's willing to allow and, and what you're willing to, which hoops you're willing to jump through to give them what they need on the trenching. So I will do whatever I can help out.
Thank you.
So as far as letter D is concerned, underground utilities is a standard in most communities. So I don't anticipate the National Grid will give you any trouble.
I've seen your, I've seen your presentations on underground from your prior town and your other meetings. And I know you're big on underground, so we can start putting stuff underground and that's what, the way the town's going to go, then that's the way the town's going to go.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's pretty much standard for most Massachusetts communities. So I was really surprised to see that Northborough hasn't required that. Most communities have been doing that since the nineteen eighties. So that kind of took me off guard. Um, the next one, letter E. So of course here, your minimum required number of parking spaces is nine. So that, of course, the, the space that's devoted to the dumpster. Of course, it's not considered a space. So number eight was the space of concern. So if you look at number eight, if you have a car parked in number seven, it's just going to be really hard to back up and maneuver out of that parking space. So the idea was that you would just create like a little tail. So if you see where two eighty-two point three dimension is on the parking lot, if you could just extend the pavement a little bit, so the car could just back up into that little tail and then exit the parking space. Because otherwise the space between where the parking space ends and number seven, it's just probably not sufficient to be able to easily maneuver out of the space.
Okay, so would you rather than see these parking spaces on forty-five degree angles opposed to being straight?
You know, I'm not really concerned about those spaces. I think that those are going to work just fine. It's just number eight that I was concerned about.
Okay.
Proximity between number eight and number seven.
Right, but if, what like, that's why I was just saying, if these were on forty-five degree angles and you're concerned about seven, which is here, that would then put seven at the end of here, which would be plenty enough park, plenty enough room to back up. That's, that's why I said, I had also said that, you know, and seven doesn't necessarily have to even be a parking spot. You know, that could be potentially taken out as I have an extra parking spot already. Something to work on. I mean, it doesn't have to get decided right this second or whatever, but I'm just saying that if you, I did do the measurements the other day and if you put these on forty-five degrees, you actually gain a little bit of room and this is also an additional parking spot if you think of it. So I guess it could probably be either you get rid of number seven and don't have that parking or you add the additional, you know, pavement up here. But I would like that to be a, an option if, if, if that's something that the, the board would approve.
I'd like to jump in if I could maybe help out a little bit. I think what happens if you put them at forty-five, you may have a problem with parking space number one. And so you may just transfer your problem to another area. It goes back to that condition number one where a civil engineer needs to stamp the plan. He can do the design for you. He can show you what the parking and the, the turning radius are. I think the easiest thing that what Lori and I were suggesting in the condition was at number eight, if there was just a little tail where the ten by twenty tracking pad is going to be, if you just had a little bump out there where that person could back out of number eight into that spot and then pull out. It, it just, right now, it looks like number eight would have to back all the way down to where it says next to the thirty-one thousand seventy-nine square feet in order to then get back down the driveway. We're just trying to make sure that person has the appropriate room to back out and then pull out forward, especially going down to Route 20. So it goes with that other condition about the civil engineer. There are turning templates that they can put on as to how the car, what, what distance and room they need to back out and turn around properly.
Okay.
There are, there are other options too. I mean, you could eliminate number eight and add one below number 10 and that might also might, might solve the problem. There are a number of things. All the town is going to be concerned about is that your plan ultimately has the right number of parking spaces on it and that you can get in and out of each one of them.
Okay.
I wonder if you could go back to your other screen?
All right.
All right, let's see. So the potholes. So there are two different locations. So there's the driveway location which seemed to be in worse condition than the parking lot. So that's why I differentiated between the two. So I thought that the So I thought that the, um, the parking lot could just be a matter of patching. And, but the, uh, but the driveway, particularly, uh, a portion of the driveway that extends, gosh, I, uh, from the intersection with Main Street to the parking lot is just in worse condition. It was kinda heating in locations, so that's why I differentiated between the two. I thought it would be beneficial for you to, uh, patch the cracks and then do an overlay. Last longer.
Okay.
Uh, the walls, um, so when the civil engineer designs your plan, uh, he will tell us the size of the walls. So right now, those are not delineated on your plan. Um, so what your, what your plan shows is it shows the existing walls, uh, but it doesn't show anything about the proposed walls. So if you don't have a wall, uh, that exceeds, uh, four feet of unbalanced fill, then you won't have to do anything with this condition. You won't need to get a building permit. However, if during the course of doing, uh, the civil engineer doing your drawing, uh, it's found that you do have a wall that's four feet or, or greater, then you'll know that you need to have a structural engineer design the wall and also that you need a building permit. So it's more of a heads up to you as to what the requirements are.
Yep, yeah, no, I realize that. I, I build many, uh, engineer walls in my business, so I know the, the rules and the regulations and stuff. And, uh, like I said, I've, uh, I've, I've seen the contours of the property and I'm, uh, I'm very confident that there, that there will not be a wall over three feet, over four feet, excuse me. But if there is one, then we will go the, uh, proper route to, uh, ensure that the proper permits are pulled.
Okay, great. Um, then the next one, having to do with affordable housing. So the, the, uh, affordability calculation is actually done by the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development. Um, so it's based on the median income for the town of Northborough. So they calculate what the median income is. Um, and then they calculate out what the rent is depending upon household size and level of affordability. Um, so they have a, they have a couple of different measurements. So they do like a measurement, I think it's fifty percent of median family income, sixty-five percent. And then they also calculate it for eighty percent. Um, so I certainly can give you a link, uh, to those, uh, calculations. If they're pretty generous, believe it or not, um, because.
Yeah, no, and I'm, and I'm fine with that. I just don't wanna be, you know, held down to it. You know, if you look at some of these punch, you know, line items up here, um, you know, the costs are obviously gonna vary. Uh, you know, I mean, just, just for instance, you know, the, the, the new water and the stuff that Fred's, uh, you know, requesting. I mean, that's like a twenty-five thousand dollar change order. So you, you, the costs are definitely adding up. I'm definitely not, uh, you know, opposed to, uh, looking into this. I just don't wanna be, uh, you know, held down to it. I mean, I've done a lot of stuff for this community. Um, you know, there's a lot of people, if, if, if you ask about my company or Justice Company or, or me as an individual, um, I've done a lot of stuff and I care about this community and, and, uh, you know, I, I would love to do some, you know, affordable housing, uh, within the community, but I just don't wanna be, you know, held down to it. But, uh, I'm, I'm, I have no issues with keeping that as a, uh, an open, uh, you know, an, an open checklist and, uh, reviewing with, reviewing it with you at a later time, Lori.
Right, I think that's pretty much the last one, right?
Is there anything else anyone would like to see before I stop sharing my, uh, screen?
Uh, I think we're, I think we're good. Um. Okay, I think if there's anything else from the board, or if anyone has, has any questions about the conditions.
Or I think, uh, I think at the end of the meeting, Brad, you had some concerns, um, about the living spaces, about the units. Are you clear on that now with what Bob presented?
Yeah, no, what he, uh, uh, the, uh, response he gave me today was perfect.
Okay, alright, I just wanna make sure you're all set.
Yep, just wanna make sure to align with the parking spaces and so it's clear it, it does, so that's.
Yep, yeah, and I think there was some concerns that there was potentially four units inside there, but Bob can confirm that there was three units only.
Cool. Um, yeah, I don't really have anything else. Um, I don't know if the staff or the, uh, anyone else from the board has any other questions. You know, definitely appreciate, um, your time and, and work on, on, on this, this project. But, um, yeah, Fred, I think you're.
Alright, yeah, thank you. I just, just to be clear, so some of the, um, requested changes in the draft actually may not, may not be necessary, or actually the conditions may not be necessary because once a civil engineer, um, reviews the plan and gives it, he will make recommended changes. So in that instance, something like the, um, letter E where we're talking about that little tail thing for parking, would it make sense not to have that as a condition? Because the civil engineer is going to give Mr. Cooley a few options. And then they would make the decision as to what would be best. And that's, I mean, that's just one example. I'm just wondering whether some of the, um, the conditions pre, are preconceived if a civil engineer has to review the plan and say what will work. Uh, cause if he's looking for options, the options can't come after we put the conditions in the decision, right?
Well, I guess it, we'll go ahead, Lori.
Um, number one does, uh, say that the site plan will show the parking lot layout. Um, so, yeah, I, I suppose it, it could be a bit redundant.
I guess, Fran, to, to that point, I guess I would just like to reserve the right to review and approve whatever the civil engineer submits. So as long as the parking is, is adequate and there's proper access in and out of all the spaces, I don't see the need for us to design the parking lot for them so much as have final approval on what it is we, we have. So I, and I don't see the need to have the plan done before you vote. I think we can find some language in there that allows us to get what we need and him to proceed and then submit the plan later on prior to a building permit or at some point.
Thank you, thank you. And through the chair, that, that's what I was looking at was to see before put conditions that we, I don't want the applicant to think that there's the room for negotiation after conditions are put in. So, um, anything that's too specific should maybe be left to that, to the civil engineer and then the review by town staff.
Mrs. Chair. You're muted, Paul. If I may. Can you hear me?
Yes, sorry.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Um, is, uh, okay, um, I'm not used to a residential, uh, plan having photographic, uh, sheet, um, is this going a little over, Fred? Or do you feel like with four dwellings, this is now approaching a multifamily complex parking lot that needs a photograph, photogrammatic, uh, layout?
Um, I think it's, I don't think it's going overboard. I think it's appropriate to make sure that, uh, the photogrammetric plan just verifies that the lighting doesn't spill over onto the neighbor's property. And so it's perfectly appropriate to be required.
Okay. Um, and, I mean, are we, I guess we as a board can discuss, um, locking this into an afford, I'm, I'm hearing a disconnect between us making a, a condition that this is affordable housing in section I and the, uh, applicant saying, no, he wants to keep this open and not make it a requirement. Um, you know, I, I think as a board, we ought to decide whether this is going to be a requirement or not. Um, while it is online and get this nailed down.
Yep, so I guess, uh, Mr. Cooley, I mean, do you have an issue with this, with, um, section I being a condition? Okay, I can't hear you, sorry.
Yeah, I think it should be, uh, up to my discretioncy on whether or not I wanna make this affordable housing or not. And if someone can, and someone can present something to me and when the project's, uh, you know, being built and say, can you look into this? I've got no issues with looking into it whatsoever. But like I said, it's, it's, it's tough to, you know, narrow it down right now. I, I, I don't even know anything about that program. So if you want me to build a house and say, yeah, I completely agree with this and I'm gonna put it in the condition and say, oh, I got no problems with abiding by that, I, I have no idea. That was, in this letter was the first time I had heard about that pro, that specific program. So, uh, ob- obviously I would like that to be my discretioncy.
Okay, uh, Suzie, I think you had your hand raised.
I, is that all that we are, um, we're, we're just verifying whether or not he would abide by it if it was as a condition? Like, is that something that we should even be discussing now? I was just wondering, I didn't know.
If it was a condition, then he wouldn't have the choice. Uh, so we would go on the subsidized housing inventory. So he wouldn't be able to get an occupancy permit until the restriction was put in place and the, uh, unit was had, added to the subsidized housing inventory. So this condition would mandate it, it wouldn't be an option. So if you don't want this condition, then just let me know, I'll delete it.
Right, I, I think that that's something that we can discuss, um, as we're making our decision, whether or not we include it. And again, like if we include it and he doesn't agree with that, then he can, you know, appeal or, or something else. Or we can say it's not, you know, we don't want, we don't need to include it or, and then we don't include it. But I think it's good that, definitely good to have the feedback though, um, in terms of what the, the applicant's looking for.
I think it's, I can explain two different scenarios real quick, just so you can kinda see it. So one scenario, one of my rental properties, there was a gentleman that was homeless that was a friend of a friend and he applied through a state program to get funding for four months that they were gonna pay his rent for him to be able to move in to one of my units. So I had met with the state, you know, representative that had this program, sat down and, uh, you know, I learned about their program and I thought it was a great thing and the gentleman was also homeless at the time. Uh, so I had agreed to that specific program under these conditions and he was able to move in. On another scenario, like I had already said, there was a group of twelve individuals from Northborough that had an Afghan, um, refugee with a child that was spark, part of a separate, um, program that they had sat me down, explained to me about their program, explained to me about the funding that they had had. And I had allowed that Afghan recu- refugee with their child to move in under another specific program. So I think there's definitely room to talk about it. Like I said, I just don't wanna be held down to it. But obviously you can see out of the multiple units that I have in town, I just gave you two examples of ways that I did work with the community and the housing, you know, and different projects to provide, you know, affordable housing for those specific, uh, you know, communities.
Okay, thank you. Um, does anyone else from the board or staff have any additional questions or comments? Okay. Um, is there any? I mean, uh, we can enter to all interested in motion to close the hearing, if that's.
Mr. Chair.
Yep, yes, Fred.
Sorry, just to double check to make sure there's nobody in the public.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Okay, I don't, I don't see any, um, hands raised currently, but thank you for reminding me. I appreciate that. Mark, I think you had your hand raised.
Yeah, I moved that we close the hearing.
Second.
Alright, Mark, uh, made a motion to close the hearing. Uh, Fran seconded. Uh, Mark?
Aye.
Fran?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Uh, and Suzie, Suzie?
Aye.
And I am an I as well, okay? Uh, thank you very much. Uh, we'll have a decision hopefully in a little bit. Thank you. Alright, um, I'd like to start with sixteen North Gate, if that's okay. Uh, so for this one, Jeff, you're gonna be the vote, uh, fifth voting member on this one. Does anyone wanna go first or?
I'll go first.
Alright, Fred.
Alright, um, well, I mean, I, I do empathize with the homeowner. Um, I'm, I'm comfortable with the variance as far as the setbacks go because, um, he is gonna move the fence and it is really very, um, very slight on the one side setback. Um, I, I feel for him over the second, um, condition. I, I, I don't think it would actually end up happening. I mean, I'd like to believe that. But I don't know how we can do it without because not knowing that it was, you know, not allowed, doesn't change that it's not allowed. And, um, there, I'm hoping that they'll, the DPW will do everything they can to work around and not have to take down the pool and the deck. I mean, it is a beautiful structure and it does look nice, but that doesn't negate the fact that it's within the setback and we have to be able to access the culvert.
Okay, uh, Jeff.
Can I ask a question regarding the fence as well? Is, is it extending into the roadway on Mayflower Road? So we'll have to move that as well as the butters?
Yes.
Looks like it is, isn't it?
Yes, so he does have, he does have, um, the aluminum fence is within the road right of way. So that's a portion of it is not on his property. And then on the opposite side, it's on his neighbor's property.
Okay.
So the condition, letter A, uh, just to be clear, uh, suggested condition, uh, letter A says that he would relocate the six-foot stockade fence and the aluminum fence. So that's the four, four-foot aluminum fence. So that they are located entirely within the boundaries of the subject property and outside of the thirty-foot drainage easement. And then it says that he'll repair, uh, any damage to the low and see the landscaping.
Okay.
Okay, and I was just gonna finish up all that I, uh, further agree with Fran. Looking at that, any kind of, you know, most work on the, um, on the, uh, the road area or the culvert is probably gonna be over in that corner closest to the road and the shed. So removing the fence or moving it back so it's outside of that easement, but still having a safety fence. Having had a pool for a number of years, you have that attractive nuisance and it's a good idea to have a, a fence, even if you have an above-ground pool. So I would be, I'd like to see the fence stay, but pulled back as far as possible.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's Brett's. Yes, essentially, sorry, Mr. Chair, but yeah, just you gotta clean it up, keep it within your boundaries, um, and, and get it off, uh, the, uh, the easement. Um, yeah, I mean, that's, that's, that's my comment, those are my thoughts.
But, but Mr. Chair, can, can I just then clap, just to make sure, so moving the.
So moving the, the fence, I'll say the side fence. Outside of the 30-foot drainage easement, that would put his shed on the outside of his fence?
Uh, I don't.
Right, yeah. I think Lori's chicken her, yes.
So what he could do is he could, I mean, it's not gonna look pretty, but what he, he could either move the shed. Uh, so that it's entirely outside of the drainage easements. Or he could butt the fence up to the shed. And then pick it up on the other side of the shed and just follow the drainage easement.
Or he could just.
And then meet it up with the, with the deck of the pool. So it wouldn't go entirely around the deck of the pool, it would like stop uh, up against the deck of the pool.
Thank you.
So I, I guess. My question with the easement then is, um, I mean. What he's looking for with this application is not relief from the easement, right? I think like, you know, generally speaking, if you build something within an easement, you basically run the risk of. If the town needs to access the easement, then you need to remove whatever structure you've put there, right? Um, and so really, he's in front of us for the two setbacks, the, you know, whatever it is, six inches and uh, I think it's nine feet or eight and a half feet. I guess, moving the fence onto his property line, I think is for me step one. Um, considering that both sides. Both sides of the fence on this, or the side, one side and the one front are off his property line. So I think that's sort of step one. Um, and then really, in terms of the easement. Um, as long as he's aware that in case of emergency, the town's gonna need to access it. And if they need to do repairs, the, the town will provide 30 days' notice to access that part of the town, right? And that's the sort of stipulation I think Scott is looking for, right? As opposed to trying to rejigger where his fence is gonna be, because I think like anyone could put something at an easement as long, but they bear the risk of. What they put in the easement. Right?
Right. And so, Mr. Chair, that then, I would say that the, the first condition would not include. Um, the fence being within the boundaries of the subject property and outside the 30-foot. We would not say outside the 30-foot and allow him the opportunity to bear the risk of leaving it. Right, he could, he could move it in and make that button, you know, setup that Lori was referring to. But he can also bear the risk of leaving it where it is, knowing that it would have to come down if it needed to be. But it's one of the, otherwise it doesn't make sense.
Right, I guess if he moves inside the 30-foot easement, he basically goes down to where before the deck is. Makes a left, goes to where the deck is, and then goes from the deck to the shed, the shed to the property line and down, right? But it's, I mean, it seemed like he was willing to sort of bear the risk of easement, knowing that. And like, you know, it's obviously like, you know, they're not gonna just bring their bulldozers in on a random Tuesday and knock over his fence. But if the culvert needs access to it, then. Um, or if the DPW needs access to the culvert, that they have every right to do so. Which, which again, is not really why he's in front of us, he's in front of us because of the setbacks.
Right, but so then, uh, again, Mr. Chair, the, the condition um, would say the fence. We're gonna require as a condition of the variance for the setbacks, that the fence be moved onto his property. He can try to get it as far out of the easement as possible, but we're not gonna require him to take it out of the easement.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, Bob, uh, am I missing anything in terms of how easements work? Is that like, isn't the risk of easements solely with the, meaning like, if I build a fence and over my, you know, if I have an easement. You guys need to use it, then you can have access to it, right?
Well, as you know, easements is a um, a legal instrument. That allows somebody other than the owner to go on to a person's property for a specific reason. And there are different types of easements, you know, there's utility easements, construction easements, drainage, sewer, you know, whatever. Um, and, you know, if, if somebody in the off chance builds something within the bounds of an easement, they do run the risk of having that. Um, uh, uh, structure or whatever, you know, removed. You know, um.
Right.
Um, I might, my, just my opinion is that I don't think our DPW, if they had to go in on an emergency, is gonna jump in. You know, and just start smashing things apart, they would probably do a little bit of surgical dismantling, I would like to say. Um, but that can't be, that can't be assured. I mean, sometimes, like somebody said earlier, sometimes these things show up in the middle of the night at three o'clock in the morning. And, and you just have to get in there and, and, and get messy. Um, but the, the purpose of an easement is to allow somebody on that property. Forever, and that's why it's in the deed and, and, you know, I, I hate, hate to sound a little hard, but I think it's buyer beware when, you know, if you buy a piece of property, you really should do your homework. And see if there is an easement on that property, because whether or not you like it, you're buying it. And, and in many cases, you're left holding the bag when you want to do something. So um, you know, it's, it's, it is partial responsibility of the buyer. I think, um, to be honest with you, I think real estate agents really should step up and open their mouths once in a while. Um, but, you know, to answer your question, if you've got an easement, uh, and there's something on it, you do run the risk of having it removed.
Right, right, I guess it, but that, that's not like, he's not asking for a variance from the easement, he's asking for side setbacks. Yeah, okay, uh, Suzie, or sorry, sorry.
No, no, go ahead, Suzie, let Suzie go first.
I was, I just wanted to point out that I was like pointing out what happened on Davis Ave earlier. Like to kind of let people know that, you know, Lori wasn't being harsh with the condition or, you know, just letting them know about the easement. Because that fixing an easement or fixing this culvert wouldn't be a small job either. So just kind of like putting it out there for everybody that was calling in, like, it wouldn't be, it's not a harsh thing and it's not a made-up document. But it's, it's a big job, even when planned, um, but. But I, I understand about the easement not being, you know, what they're looking for relief, but. So that was my only point.
Okay, I think it's a good point, I think, but you know, easements exist all over town, so. Um, Fred, did you have anything?
I did, I, I had a couple of points.
Um, yep.
One is that um, the easement is not just there for emergencies. There are sometimes routine maintenance and sometimes a DPW worker needs to access that easement. And so if the fence stays where it is, it almost goes to that rear property line, he can't get down to that drainage easement. So I don't know, I mean, the DPW director said, I think, to make it clean, move it outside the easement and then we won't have a problem. Clearly, they need more room than what's left there with the fence, but whether they need it to go all the way to the 30 feet, I don't think we have the ability to do that. It's either one or the other. Um, and so I, I can appreciate that you want to make it his responsibility. If it, if it needs to be moved, he'll move it. But the other thing is, there are other reasons besides just the emergency that that drainage easement is there. The other point I wanted to make is that the DPW director sent you that letter because the applicant is requesting a variance. And in order to grant him the variance, he's saying, I'm okay with these things staying in my easement, but this is what I would like for you to make as a condition. So um, and I believe that was a attempt by the DPW director to work with the ZBA and the applicant to make the situation as uh. Feasible for everyone as possible, um, but without sacrificing too many rights. He, he doesn't have a right to have his pool and patio or his deck that close to the property line. And nobody wants to make him move it a couple of inches, but if you're moving it, but move it out of the easement. So I think his goal of sending that memo was to say, if you're gonna grant the easement, these are the conditions that I would like to see that I could live with. So I think that's what he was trying to get at with that letter, although I was away when he wrote it.
Thanks, Fred, appreciate that. Um, does anyone else have any other? Comments, uh, Suzie?
It's, it's been a mile since I've um, practiced law and even longer since I went to law school. Um, i- is B like, even though we're putting B there, that's, that's still the case, like even if we didn't put it in there, right? Like there's an easement, so this can happen anyways. It's on the deed, he purchased the property, so, you know, just to just keep that in mind, that B seems harsh. But even if we didn't put it, like it's gonna happen anyways, I think um, would, like to add on to what Fred was saying, Scott's just being like, just a reminder. If you give this, you know, this is gonna happen and it's further notice of it. Maybe the timeline might be a little different, but um.
Self doesn't actually have a time, the 30 days, that's the only thing that we're adding, is that.
Yeah.
As, as a courtesy, the DPW is gonna give him 30 days, they don't actually, they probably don't have to at all. The easement just has access to.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah.
Um. Uh, yeah, Brett, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, so I mean, my, my comment about moving the fence, I mean, at the end of the day, he still has the pool, he still has uh, the shed. Um, for lack of a better term, like in violation or it's within the 30-foot buffer zone. And so he can move the fence in closer, but if they still have to get access to that easement, that fence still has to come down. So I mean, I think that's up to the applicant, it's more about granting um, the, the setback relief. And, I mean. I'm, to me personally, I, I'm okay with what Lori put in for conditions and what the, the head of DPW put in for conditions. And as long as the applicant knows that, that's, that's what they have in store, then it is what it is.
Okay, so I think, just so. Just so we're clear here, right? I think the first thing is obviously moving the fence onto his property line, right? The second thing is whether or not the fence is gonna be running along the easement. Um, I have lessened, I have lessened opinion on that. I, I feel like the risk runs with the property owner, if you want to build on an easement, then, then you bear the risk. And it seems like the applicant is aware of the risk. Um, and we can add the language that says that the DPW needs to access it while in an emergency, that they have every right to. And then if need to do maintenance work on it, you know, he has an opportunity to move his fence however he sees fit, I guess. Um, but that, you know, and it sort of include what. The DPW director states in his, his email, where, you know, any and all physical improvements, you know, um. Should be vacated, um, all physical impedances, uh, within 30 days provided written advance notice of the same, right? Um, so I'm fine with, with that language and not necessarily making him move the fence along the easement line. Um, I don't know what, what anyone else thinks on that, but I just, I find the risk of easements. You know, and then, you know, obviously it's. The, the setback of the 15 feet. Right, is, you know, on the back there, I mean. Yeah, I don't know, I mean, it seems like it's.
For me, that's.
Yeah, I, I would not personally put, build something on an easement, but. Um, I guess he's, what he's really asking us for is just the one-foot setback uh, on the back and then nine feet on the side. Or the two sides, whatever, so. I don't know if anyone else has any other opinions on, yeah, Jeff?
I just have one, and that is, he has to move the fence. Because it's a budding, because it's on the butters land and it's on Mayflower Road. If he were to pull the fence from the back to the back of the shed and the back of the deck. It would probably alleviate all but an emergency situat, or all but a scheduled need to affect that fence. Give much more access from Mayflower down and probably while he's already working on two-thirds of the fence anyway. He had asked us for a little bit of direction and I think if we said that for the variances, we want you as a condition to move the fence to this point. But recognize that the easement is still there and in an emergency or in any scheduled event, he'd still have to further remove it. Think that would kind of split the difference, that's from my perspective.
Right, yeah, no, I, I, I think that that um, at least for me, I, I agree with that, right? I mean, he can take a hardline stance and not move his fence, or sorry, move his fence to his property. And then keep it on the easement and run the complete risk of scheduled maintenance. Or he can work with Scott, I guess, to try to figure out something if they need to bring like a small truck or a bobcat or something back there, but.
I agree.
Okay.
Okay, so, Mr. Chair.
So, yeah, Fred, oh no, sorry, I, okay, I was gonna recap the conditions, but you can, you can do it.
All right, okay, Mr. Chair, I move that we grant the applicant's request for a variance for relief of the side setback requirements of one-foot side setback. And 8.3-foot side setback for the pool and deck structures for the property located at 60 North Gate Road. With the following conditions, safeguards and limitations on time or use set forth as follows. The applicant shall relocate the six-foot stockade fence and aluminum fence so that they are located entirely within the boundaries of the subject property. The applicant shall install loam and seed where the landscaping is impacted by the relocation of the fences. Second, any and all physical improvements located within the municipal drainage easement are subject to demolition. In the event of planned municipal access needs, the owner shall vacate all physical impediments or impedances. Within 30 days, when provided written notice in advance of same. In the event of emergency municipal access needs, the owner is hereby made aware that the municipality may demolish any and all physical impedances. Without harm to the municipality or restitution of the property owner of record.
Okay. Uh, Fran made a motion.
Second.
And Brad seconded. Um, we will do a roll call vote. Um, Fran.
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Uh, Suzie?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Uh, and I am an I as well. Okay. Eighty Main Street. Okay, eighty Main Street. Does anyone want to go first? All right, Mark?
Okay, um, I know that it's been discussed that this is a single dwelling. So that we now have two dwellings on the property. I tend to look at it as a two-building, multi-family dwelling uh, arrangement. Um, I'm not sure that is a legal definition, but I don't, I don't see it as a single-family dwelling. I see it as a multi-family dwelling is four. Um, there is a history uh, that's unique to this property in that there used to be a fourth dwelling on the property. So I would tend to be in favor of it and I don't think it establishes a precedent for the neighborhood or the area because of the existence. for the neighborhood or the area because of the existence of the uh non-conforming use in the past. And I think that uh affordable housing is um messy unless you want to do a uh, you know, a six story sixty unit, whatever. Um you tend to get these off uh off kilter arrangements that make it affordable. Um he is not asking for it to be locked into an affordable unit, and I would strike out clause I binding him to the affordable unit, I it's, I just see that is not what he's asking, and I think we should vote it straight up and down on essentially what he's asking for and has agreed to. And uh, uh but I'm open that if the rest of the board believes we should vote it with the uh condition of forcing him into an affordable unit, so be it.
Okay, thank you, Mark, appreciate it. Um Suzie?
Hi, so he's asking for um a use variance, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So we have a three point test that we have to go through, and the way that I look at it is the precedent that we would be setting is not based on looking at the individual property, but whether or not we're using the test, um and being that this has come up at town meeting two or three times where they wanna take it away from the ZBA because they don't think that it belongs here or is being used properly, I think it's very important that we go through the three part test um before making our decisions and looking at the conditions and taking a vote.
Okay. Do you wanna?
Should we start, should we start with that?
Go ahead.
Okay, so the use variant, um then the first one is a three prong. It's sparingly used, like very sparingly, I've done a lot of research on this. And it's about the soil condition, shape or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district. Um another another part of that from different um legal cases in the state of Massachusetts and from a training that I actually attended um right before this came up. Um it was one of the trainings we were all invited to by um by Lori was not only that, again, this is rare and you need all three, but you need an expert. Um and an expert, and so what I believe the applicant is saying is that the parking lot will collapse without this drainage wall uh or the retaining wall and without the structure being there. Um we, I, we have no expert documents on this. Um he's actually gonna take out the retaining wall and then rebuild it and said that the structure would, the parking lot would still stand and it's not gonna affect the parking lot or the multifamily house. Um I went on the site visit, so I saw it, Brad saw it. Um I don't know if anybody else has any comments or anything on this first part of the uh use variance.
Um I I guess, uh so I did do a site visit last week. Um I guess what I would say just my opinion on this, um is that there is a retaining wall um that basically runs almost the entire length of the sort of side driveway and sort of the, you know, wh- where the the structure currently exists, um only accounts for a small part of the driveway, but okay.
I don't see the whole thing crumbling down, and I and I realize another thing before we even start this, like the applicants both have done so much good for the community and they're active participants in it. Um and I understand that, but we do have this test that we have to look at. Um so I just wanna put that out there too. Like I think the fact that he's helped out a homeless person and the Afghani family, that's wonderful and they both give back to the community through their businesses, but um being that this particular thing has come before town meetings so many times, and I've heard here people's, you know, members of the board speak and um wanting to keep it, that we really need to use it properly.
Okay. Uh Suzie, are you looking for like discussion on this?
Yeah, and should we go, like, I I didn't know if we should discuss each prong as a group or if anybody else had any thoughts after reviewing everything?
I guess for, in terms of the first comment that you made, um do you wanna, does anyone else have any comments, I guess with regards to that? Um the soil condition, shape or topography?
No, well.
Conservation, oh, sorry, go ahead, friend.
No, no, go ahead.
I know conservation went out there, put their stakes up just to make sure, like, you know, that the applicant is doing everything within the boundaries. Um and from what I've read and what I've I've seen, that there's no issues with shape or topo- uh topography. And I know they're keeping the same footprint um of what's currently there today.
Uh Fran, sorry, you were gonna say something?
No, alright, so um as far as, well the location of the the current footprint and the fact that he is looking to put a structure on that same footprint that would act as a retaining wall, right, instead it would be a a basement, it's still a structure, I mean, I'm not a civil engineer, so I don't know the uh material differences, but um to me, that does hold up as far as it is replacing something that was holding up a driveway. Now, unless the Conservation Commission said in absence of that, we now have a conservation issue, because then it, without that, either that basement or the retaining wall, there is an issue to the wetlands. But um.
Well, we we don't even have like anybody telling us that, yes, this all would collapse without it anyways, there's no expert report. It's like my, you know what I mean, we don't even have an engineer's report um on this. Um and I know the Conservation Committee isn't looking at the same things that we're looking at, and just like groundwater doesn't look at the same things we look at, they give us recommendations for their portion of an application, and then we kind of take it all together and add in other stuff as well.
Okay. That's, Suzie, do you wanna keep going or?
Yeah, I'll go, I'll go if you want me to go. Um I'll, and then the second prong is a literal enforcement of provisions of the ordinance or by law when in mantle's in involves substantial hardship, financial or otherwise. Um sympathy alone is not appropriate legal basis, um same height and width. Um the the plot of land is not being ruled unusable without this property. Um and there's gonna be in substantial financial involvement to rebuild it. Um so I I don't know, I've not, I've never voted on a use variance here, I know they're very rare to come before us, but um those were my thoughts, it it's not the same height or width, it's triple the size. Um I understand he's trying to make a nicer living unit, but um those are the, you know, what we has come before us.
I I guess I would only say, um, you know, the hardship that is caused, right, his his response to that, and I'll just read off his letter, is that they would suffer a hardship uh of having the parking area in the hillside, lose structural integrity integrity, which will harm the property, so that's sort of the basis for um why he's looking for the variance, but.
Which again, we don't have the proof of.
In addition, in addition, though not exclusive, uh Mr. Chair, is the financial hardship can be factored in in granting a variance. The fact that this gentleman purchased the land with the understanding, misguided or not, that he could rebuild on that same footprint and not and potentially need a special permit, it was later learned that it was a variance. Um there is question as to whether or not he would have purchased the land with that understanding. Um the the use variance is always very specific to the property and the location. The fact that this is a multi-unit property that has twice the land amount that is the minimum required for that zone um at thirty thousand versus the fifteen thousand, if he was adding another a unit inside the main structure, it would be it would generate the same benefit, but not be before us in the same fashion, so to me, that individual building is just another unit in what is already a pre-existing non-conforming use on that property. It's slightly different because it's separate and um but the property itself can maintain that. Um I guess I'm a little concerned that we went through a a meeting with a lot of discussion about conditions only to be now talking about not even being able to get to those potential conditions for something that is being brought up at this point, which is.
Yeah, that's, I I was a little confused about that as well, yeah. I I don't see it as going backward because we as a board had not discussed it or made a decision.
Right, right.
You know, we're we're, that's the finding a fact and to see where they would be willing to work, so they wouldn't have to go back to the drawing board and start the timer um to come back before us, basically. But um I I was sitting there one, kind of wondering the same thing, because we hadn't gone through what the use what we're supposed to go through for a use variance, but I understand that it was good to hear his feedback, and then he could learn as well a little bit.
Yeah, I guess, I guess the only thing I would say um is in terms of the financial hardship. Um you know, I think we may have, I may have asked, um but I don't think that that was ever mentioned as something, I mean, he's currently using the property as a as a three unit multifamily, obviously he has rental income. Um you know, I'm I'm not sure what the financials are in terms of, you know, if it, there's a profit or loss or whether or not this is you know, he was actually building or pricing in, but I mean, the the side, backside building hasn't been used in twelve years, so I would imagine that um that was something that was known ahead of time, but I think, Mark, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, um the financials of this, I think we should totally disregard, he hasn't made a case for the financials, um and I don't feel we should uh care about it much at all, I do think there is uh also the idea that the current structure there is a hazard to the neighborhood, is a detriment to the neighborhood. Um you know, somebody could easily, yeah, do horrible things to themselves, kids could go in there. Um it's it's a hazard, um improving this to a uh, you know, to an afford, to a livable unit is a, you know, is a plus to the neighborhood, and he has the area um to support it because it used to be there as a uh, as a rentable unit. Um I guess that's also kind of weighing in on my decision on where I have, where I am on this in that it's a, the rest of the neighbors are probably looking forward to having this constructed rather than having it remain a derelict.
Um Suzie, do you have, do you have any, any else, or?
Um I mean, there's a third prong as well, and I I don't think we can just say that we're gonna disregard the second when it's it's literally like a three part test for a a use variance. Um desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating, derogating from intent or purpose of such ordinance or bylaw. Um so we we were just discussing, and it's like part of the responsibility of the buyer to know whether or not you have an easement, and I think um if you're making a large investment into something like that, you should you know. I I just, I don't, I don't see, um and I, you know, I I want to make the town better, that's why I'm here, and make things look better. Um if it's in such derelict condition that it's a hazard to others and people can be harmed by it, I don't think that's our problem, I think then maybe whoever condemns things, you know, fire or police or Bob, you know, should look at it differently. Um I appreciate that he took a day and a half to go ask the neighbors their opinion, um a lot of them are renters. Um and of course, you know, they would want this, um but if you look at some of the case law, when you're supposed to pass stuff like this, like there's a one, one, there's like a coastal town mentioned that has large rocks in their front yard, and they want um relief from a setback because of the rocks, but it turns out everywhere in town, they have rocks like that. Um this is, this property isn't unique for where it sits. There's properties all along that the little stream or river. Um I don't know, I'm just, I I come at it, like looking at it from a legal standpoint, and I just don't see how we can jump over that. Not set a precedent with the use variance. It's gonna be a lot easier when it comes up to town meeting, um if we're not using the test that goes along with it. Um it, you know. If it was a different kind of variant, or a different kind of ask, then it would be different, I think is what I'm trying to say.
Um I got, uh Brad, sorry, you had your hand raised?
Yeah, so did, just wanna jump in, I mean, a few things, um I mean, uh, where we were. Uh I mean cause I know Northboro has been um achieving a more uh again, here we go. Uh alright, can you hear? Yes, no?
You're you're kinda, you're kinda cutting in and out, Brad, I don't know if anyone else is having the same.
I'm having the same issue.
Okay, sorry, yeah, Brad, sorry, can you uh, can you hear us?
Try and figure this out.
Okay. Um I I guess uh actually, I'll wait for Brad to get back. I'm not sure if you can hear us.
Alright, is any better now?
Yeah, slightly better, but.
Sorry. So one of the things I was looking at and is back in two thousand nine when we revamped our bylaws, Main Street Residential, where this property currently exists um was voted six to zero by the planning board at the time to not allow um like apartments, accessory dwellings, uh multi, multifamily dwellings. And so this property itself is already pre-existing non-conforming, which it is what it is. Um and the other bylaws, so we don't really have bylaws for an accessory dwelling in in places like this, so I was looking at some of our other bylaws, and one I was looking at was seven dash zero eight zero six zero, reconstruction after catastrophe or demolition. The applicant has clearly stated that there was a fire. Um I forget what year, and one of the conditions was the building as reconstructed shall be located on the same foot. one of the conditions was the building as reconstructed shall be located on the same footprint as the original non-conforming structure and shall be only as great in volume or area as the original non-conforming structure. I don't understand why the applicant needs to triple the size of the building there. I don't understand how tripling the size would overcome the hardship that the applicant is talking about. Um, it's already a non-conforming structure. We're making even more non non-conforming and we're also tripling the size of the dwelling. Those are some raises raise a lot of red flags for me and 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 so if anyone else, again, in other residential areas, if you want to build an accessory dwelling, um, I've been looking for this thing for the past day and I can't find it. But if you want to build an in-law apartment or or whatever, it's only twenty-five percent of what the current structure is. The applicant has to live on the premises. This application does not fit any of these criteria at all, at all. And so for me, I mean, this is, these are just raising red flags for me and and it does not fit the, it does not hit the three-point criteria for a use variance. So there are a lot of stuff out there, but I mean, this is what I've been thinking about.
Okay, uh, thanks, Brad. Suzie, was there anything additional that you had? Or?
I mean, that was pretty much it. I don't even think the retaining wall, if I remember correctly, and from the photos that we had seen and when we walked out there. I don't even think it goes the whole length of the the parking lot. Um, I just, I mean, um, the it's it's the three-prong, you know, test and we we don't even meet the first one because we don't have an expert. I feel very badly, you know, for them that they purchased it and were hoping to make rental income off of there, even if they were gonna donate the space down the road, but um if it was a, I don't know, if it was a financial hardship, maybe they would build the home smaller. I don't know. Um, but it's just, it's not meeting, you know, what I have read up on in the cases and um everything.
Okay, thank you, Suzie. Uh, Mark?
Yeah, um, I think we've reached an impasse here. I think we should uh, structure a proposal, put it up to a vote and uh and let the vote fall as it is.
Um, sure, yeah, okay. Um, I I guess what I'll just say is um from from my opinion on this or in my estimation, um, where where I get hung up on is sort of the the zoning impact of this application, right? Um, and whether or not it derogates from the intent or the purpose. And so you know, for for my own knowledge, I went back and I read the minutes from two thousand eight, two thousand nine when all these zoning bylaws were brought up across the entire town, right? Um, and there's one part in particular where they talk about multifamilies in residential districts and they single out Main Street Residential and sort of comparing it sort of to the downtown neighborhood, which downtown neighborhood, which is sort of just north of Main Street Residential and their multifamilies are allowed, right? And you know, one of the members of the planning board suggests not allowing um multifamilies in Main Street residential multifamily should be on a reasonably small small scale. Um, you know, these are the sorts of conversations that the town was having at the time at a board level. Uh, you know, for public comments and then obviously when voting on in two thousand and nine, right? So there's a great effort that was being made at the time to sort of not have multifamily zoning in in this part of town, right? Whether you agree with that or not. Um, and so looking at this project and looking at this sort of side structure, right? You know, there's no bylaw that exists for an accessory dwelling on a multifamily residential house, right? If you own a house in this part of town and you want to convert it to a multifamily house, you don't need a variance, right? You need a special permit and you can go through the special permit process. Um, I do view this as an accessory dwelling on a multifamily residential property. And so I guess, you know, my thing is that this entire project doesn't exist within our own bylaws today, right? If you want to put an accessory dwelling on a single-family home, you have an entire paragraph that you need to abide by, that you can do by right. Okay, that doesn't exist for multifamily residential house, right? And so that's kind of where I get hung up on, you know, and sort of the whole you know, whether it sets a precedent or whether it doesn't, um, I mean, I can see both sides to that sort of coin, right? Um, is the property different? Is it big? Sure, yes, but there's, you know, a lot of different ways. But I think what it does do is sets a bad expectation that this is allowable in town. And I don't, that's not really a legal legal term, but that's sort of what I how my view is on this and sort of I just wanted to sort of state that. Um, but um, I don't know if anyone else had any other comments or Yep, Fran.
Right, I mean, it there's no two sides of the coin on on precedence from a legal standpoint, but yes, there is that people feel that, well, it's an um an expectation and that they can do it too, which is not legally binding. But that being said, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, yes, we did zoning changes. Since then, we've done a master plan. We now have a master plan intimate implementation committee. We have a a downtown revitalization committee and uh project. And if we don't offer alternative housing, not um necessarily affordable housing by state um percentages, but alternative housing densely populated in an area that is going to be encompassed in our downtown area, right? This is within the walking distance of what we are envisioning our downtown to be. If we don't have people there, we're not going to have that vibrancy we're looking for. I mean, I get the reasons why you can vote against it, but I really was hopeful that we were gonna figure out a way to say yes. The use variances, I mean, we always have discretion in how we interpret the the laws and the process. And I'm just, I'm disappointed to see that um, we went through a laborious meeting, two of them now, going through detail. And to Suzie's point, we should have started with this. If this is what, if this is how we're going to approach use variances moving forward, we should have started with this. And I appreciate the fact that she's bringing it up now. I just wish we would have done it first.
Okay, thanks, Fran. Uh, Suzie?
I just, I I didn't want to step on um the chair's toes and I'm, you know, I'm a newer voting member, so I didn't want to bring it up and um appear rude before the applicant or anything. Um, it would have been hard to 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 stop the train, so to speak, if I'm running alongside of it. But I I mean, I do see the good in discussing, I will say, like some of the things and I know we've done it with prior cases um with industrial stuff, you know, well, what if you put in a different the the tanks underneath, you know, I I can't even think of the technical name of them, but you guys um probably know what I'm referring to um for the automotive stuff and everything. However, um, if we can't change like the bylaws here and we don't really have a lot of wiggle room for interpretation of like legal tests and laws. But I mean, I think that's something to bring up at the January third meeting when we're with the planning board who will be drafting things to go before um town meeting and to change then. But um yeah, I I didn't, I didn't know how to stop the discussion because I know that it has been useful in the past, but I didn't know either how anybody was feeling about the item. So did, you know, it's kind of a weird gray area if we discuss conditions beforehand. But that was, that was uh just what I wanted to say. So I apologize. I didn't know if I should say something or not. I just, you know, I know that we've discussed it before and it's helped and the applicant has said, okay, hold up. I'm gonna, can we have a continuance, you know? So.
Yeah, and I I guess uh just from from my own um I guess what what I'll say is um, you know, we could probably do a better job in terms of the process and the flow of the case than if that if that's what people want to do going forward. Um, you know, we could definitely try to address certain things earlier. Um, but I think for my own personal thing is I really didn't know uh which way. I was going to vote, but um, you know, I wanted to make sure that we had all the facts and conditions and discussions out there ahead of time. Um, again, this is not an easy case. This is a very complicated case with a lot of moving parts. Okay, uh, does anyone else had any other comments or questions? Is there a motion? Maybe with regards to how the motion is made, um, I guess the suggestion I would have is it doesn't really matter. The motion is made with all the conditions listed um in Lori's email or her draft decision and then it's voted, you know, however people want to vote, you know, whether you vote whether you make a um, you know, so you could vote into the affirmative or whatever the case is. We approve it and then people vote yes or no. Kind of just do the opposite, but.
So how how do you, can you explain that again? I'm sorry. You want um me to list? I'll make a motion. I I just don't understand. Like, I know we have to do it like in the affirmative. Should I do it with um? I'm not sure. Can you repeat that? I got confused.
Oh, sorry, um.
Mr. Chair, Mark has his hand up.
Oh, yeah, sorry, Mark.
All day. Uh, basically, you can make the motion in the affirmative. It's okay if you want to vote against it. We've often done that, but the whole idea is to make the motion in favor of granting the um, in this case, a used variance for the property at eighty Main Street with the whatever conditions you want to put into it, and then we vote on it. And as I said, the fact that you proposed it doesn't bias you that you can vote against it or or uh in favor it, depending on how you want to go.
Right. So basically, like, you know, the the draft decision that we received was sort of written to grant the applications request, so you can make a motion to grant the applications request with all of the conditions that are listed in the uh draft decision uh from uh the the email from Lori on November ninth. Um, and then how you vote is if you say yes, obviously granting the variance, then you're approving it. And if you say no, it's not. And then it sort of just goes from there. So yes, to Mark's point, we
Yeah, doing that, would it, we get lost and somebody wants to vote yes for it, but they don't like some of the conditions? Or is it totally knocking it down if?
Then then they should have made a proposal.
Okay.
Correct.
If you make the proposal, we vote on it.
And then that's
And that's it.
Okay. That voting, making it the proposal always in the affair, like that just, that's what I got hung up on. Okay. So um, I'll make a motion to accept the applicant's um request for a use variance for eighty Main Street. Um, should I read the whole paragraph, Lori? This first paragraph.
Um, what I would do is I would just reference the sections that are in the paragraph. So sections uh seven dash zero five dash zero two zero B subsection one. So I would just reference those three um sections, because those are the the three areas that we need relief from.
Okay, hold on.
So it's on page five of the draft decision, right?
Okay. Oh, okay. Yeah, sorry. I was looking at the front page and then the end. Okay. Um, so I make a motion to pass um the applicant's request for variances from section seven dash zero five dash zero two zero B section one. Section seven dash zero six dash zero three zero H and section seven dash zero seven zero one zero D to allow the use of a single-family dwelling on the same property as a multifamily dwelling in the Main Street residential district and groundwater overlay district area three on the property located at eighty Main Street Assessors Map sixty-four parcel twenty-three with all the conditions, safeguards and limitations on time or used set forth as followed in Lori Connor's draft decision dated that was emailed to us um as part of the um public record and application process.
Okay, uh, Suzie made a motion?
I'll second the motion.
All right, Mark seconded the motion. So the motion was to grant the variance um with all the conditions laid out in the uh letter from uh Lori, right? Okay, uh, Suzie?
No.
Uh, Mark?
I.
Uh, Brad?
Nay.
Uh, Fran?
I.
And I am a no. Okay. Two yeses and a no, three no's. Okay. Um, let's see. Are there any other things that we have? Uh, we approved the minutes? Our next, so our next meeting, uh Lori will be December, sorry, January third uh twenty twenty-three at six P M. And it's a joint meeting?
Correct.
Okay, um, not to take up the rest anyway, anyone else's time, but do you have any idea or how many Warren articles the planning board is looking at or any anything in particular that you think is uh useful knowledge before that meeting? Or do you want to just send us the sheet when we get it?
Give the sheet, because actually I didn't bring it home with me. Um, we have about ten articles that we're thinking about. Uh, we will be adding an additional one. Uh, Fred Litchfield and I are are working on that, having to do with uh the groundwater protection overlay um, minimum lot size requirements. Uh, but other than that, uh, there the other articles are pretty much all set. A couple of them specifically pertain to uh the Z B A. One of which is the currently uh the special permit process or maybe a site plan review says that the the special permit granting authority will adopt regulations uh pertaining to the submittal requirements. And of course, uh, the Z B A has not adopted any regulations uh governing site plan review. Uh, so the proposal is to change the language so that the Z B A would follow the regulations that the planning board has in place. You can't imagine that you would want anything different because the planning board regulations are pretty comprehensive. Um, but that's one of the proposals that are are there for your consideration.
Okay, are are those um is a is a version or a copy available on the town website or will you just, are they still discussing them at this point?
Still discussing at this point. Uh, so I do anticipate that one additional change. So we'll be talking about them on December sixth. I can send you the draft that I currently have. Uh, I was just kind of concerned about having too many drafts floating out there. But if you'd like me to send uh along what I have, I'd be happy to do that tomorrow.
I don't know if anyone would want to see Fran. I don't know if anyone would want to see, Fran, would you wanna see a version of them or? I think we could probably wait, how about we can wait until after the third December sixth meeting in which they sort of fine tune some of the things and then. You know, I figure as long as we get, you know, since we're not having a December meeting, a week or so or two weeks considering Christmas. Prior, hopefully we get a version of that so that we can become prepared to discuss with the planning board, um, sort of our thoughts uh, on their, their. Uh, proposals. Does that work?
Absolutely.
Okay. Um. Does anyone else have any, anything else? For the meeting for tonight?
I move the.
Okay, Mark made the motion to adjourn, Brad seconded the motion, Mark?
I.
Brad?
I.
Uh, Fran?
I.
Suzie?
I.